Oh, there we are.
Yeah. We have sectionals this week, yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
This came from some practice.
Welcome to the Oshkosh area School District Board of Education regular scheduled meeting. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olmsted?
Here.
Heschel?
Here.
Okay, and tonight will be led in the Pledge of Elegance by two Merrill Middle School students. You can start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll go right into Board and Administrative Reports. I don't have anything tonight, so, oh, should we jump into student?
Yes.
Is it okay?
All right.
All right, so this is our Wildcat update for the past month. So, as many guys know, yesterday was Halloween, so there was a lot of fun events that happened at West. We had our, and student government hosted our annual costume contest. So, we haven't voted on our winners yet, we'll do that next week, but here are just some examples of people who dressed up in their really fun costumes. So here we have Dunkin' Donuts, which is a really fun costume, I personally thought.
Could you play the video?
This is another costume. He was the OxiClean Man. Oh. I don't know if it'll play. We can just go back to it, we can't skip it. He went around school and he recited the entire commercial, so that's what the video was, it was him reciting it, which was really funny. We have even staff, they participated too. We had George Washington on the left, that's Mr. Self Luke, and then Mr. Miller on the right, and he was a table.
Yes, he is.
So, he would bend over and then there was a table. Oops. And then we had a teacher who was a fidget spinner, and I don't know if this will play.
This one will.
Okay, awesome. It's boring, but she could spin it herself, too. So even the staff was really getting into it, which was really fun to see. Could you click the next slide through? On top of the costume contest, we also had our annual haunted house. I believe this is the third year that they are, they have done this. The Special Education Department has teamed up with leadership classes and this year, Level 3 of the Oshkosh West Academy for Global Studies. It was a huge hit this year, we had sponsors, it was extremely scary. Kids throughout their day, first through third hour, if the teacher let them, you could go through the haunted house, there's candy, and you got frightened because it was actually very scary. There's kids jumping out, and also people from the community could come into, could come into it, so there is people from the nursing home going around, it was wheelchair accessible, so that was really fun to see, other people enjoyed as well. Then last night at 7:30, the Oshkosh West bands had their spooktacular, and you could even see the band teachers, they got into it, changing their costumes. The biggest hit was Mr. Wilson, I believe it is, he came out in the poop emoji, so that was really fun to see. And all the band kids dressed up, they had an adult costume contest, which you can see on the right. Their last piece of the night was Thriller, which was a marching band piece, and all the students participated in it, they were all around in their costumes, so that was just a really fun event. It lasted really long, but there's a lot of good music, and it was just a lot, it was fun to see all the hard work that was put into it. For Wildcat sports, our soccer boys had an amazing season. They were regional champs, sectional finalists. Unfortunately, last Saturday, they lost their game, but they, we are so proud of them because they have made it so far, they were FBA champs, and they worked their butts off at like all the, all day, every day, every practice. They had good sportsmanship about everything, and we're just so proud of them. Our swimming and diving team had conferences past weekend. We have sectionals this upcoming weekend. On the right, you can see our 200 medley relay placed third, this is varsity conference. Our varsity diver, Maddie Smith, placed fifth, and we had another varsity diver placed seventh. And then on the left, we had JV Conference last week, Monday, and there was amazing swims by ladies. We had a bunch of time drops, so that was really fun to see their hard work being paid off.
So is that a draft?
Yes, that's our team mascot, kind of. Yeah. And then we have our, we'll see if I pronounce it right, equestrian team. They were two state qualifiers, and they also got the Spirit Award, so that was really cool to see. Today, the levels 2 and 3 of the Oshkosh West Academy for Global Studies celebrated Dia de los Muertos. Level 2 taught Level 3 about the Day of the Dead, which is, that's what it means in Spanish, and that was really cool to see, that interaction between the two levels, because, just because you're in different grades, it doesn't not mean that you can't learn from other people. So that was really an awesome way to interact. And that's all I have for today, so thank you.
Thank you. And our Oshkosh North students not here tonight, is, did we just skip over?
We just skipped over.
No, she hasn't texted me back.
If she comes back and she has something, we'll...
Perfect. Awesome. All right, so we'll let Stan give us his good news report.
Sure. Well, Super Nunez, good news report for this being November 1st, 2017. This evening, we celebrate quite a number of activities in the very short period between the last two board meetings. Author Valerie Boden visited students and staff at Perry Tipler and Alps in early October to showcase many of the books she had written and talked about finding credible sources and when seeking information on a topic. Families enjoyed the literacy workshop evening and wrote together, wrote together after brainstorming their ideas. It was almost, it was the most inspiring event for the evening. Emma line Cook students enjoyed walking to school each Tuesday and Friday during their school year with Dr. Eric and learning about, from him, about living an active and healthy life. But on Friday, October 20th, they walked for a cause to raise awareness about breast cancer, and over 100 people participated, wearing pink and walking together to celebrate people who fight the disease, and including their very own 3rd grade teacher, Mrs. Rudiger. Community students at Oshkosh North learned about pollution in warm bodies, they spent time teaching 4th and 5th grade students about pollution awareness, and shared the project on WFRB and WSH Radio. 1st grade students at Webster Stanley Elementary School enjoyed their visit from firefighter John, who taught them about several valuable lessons about how to stop, drop, and roll if their clothes are caught on fire. South Park Middle School invites you to join the annual Veterans Day Assembly on Friday, October 10th at 10:30, or November 10th at 10:30 AM at their school gymnasium. There will be a color guide presentation, along with musical performances, a guest speaker, and playing of taffs. Smith Elementary students hosted their first annual walkathon on October 6th as a part of Walk to School Day. Their goal was to raise $500 to purchase a new water bottle filling station, but they ended up collecting over $1,300. Students who walked were awarded a prize and enjoyed some time on the playground with their friends from UW Oshkosh. Thank you to Merrill Middle School staff who donated to the United Way and the community, many of whom were sporting their United Way T-shirts. Congratulations to three Oshkosh West High School seniors, picture here, Kimmy, Erica, and Maggie, who qualified for the WIAA Girls Tennis Individual State Tournament, where Kimmy medaled, taking 6th place, a great job. And congratulations to Oshkosh North Courtney Day, who qualified for the state tennis competition. While she lost in her first match in Madison, she proved to have had a great season. And congratulations also to Oshkosh North students pictured here, including Sidney Jack, Sidney, Sidney Jack Wesley, and who qualified for cross-country, and who took, took place this past Saturday in Wisconsin Rapids. Seven IST math teachers recently presented at the National Math Recovery Conference in Minneapolis, where they shared coaching strategies, home-to-school connection practices, and a way to keep the momentum of math professional development within a large school district. Congratulations to Oshkosh North High School for receiving the Manufacturing Partnership Award from the New Manufacturing Alliance for the work they did with Oshkosh Corporation in designing a grill, and what was a replica of old Betsy, Oshkosh Corporation's first vehicle ever produced. Oshkosh Corp. has partnered with Oshkosh North High School for two years to create a grill through the project, GRILL, which stands for Growing Readiness in Learning and Leading. The educational partnership provides students with manufacturing skills and mentoring while raising awareness for numerous careers in manufacturing. And last Wednesday night, we were represented by Julie, and attending that event up in Green Bay, I believe. And on October 25th, nearly 750 8th grade students from the area participated in a career clusters showcase event at Oshkosh West High School, where they were welcomed by more than 75 area business presenters in over 50 booths, who interacted with the students about career opportunities and career pathways. The showcase provided an opportunity for the students to meet with people who in those occupations, in which they are interested in pursuing, and allowing them to learn about a path that they would need to take in organizations, universities, colleges, to prepare themselves for the future. Thanks to all who made this showcase a successful event. And lastly, I believe the Oshkosh area School District has been recognized by the Foundation for Blended Online Learning and Innovation in a Traditional District. They recently provided a report titled Teaching with Technology: Educator's Perspective and Recommendations for Successful Blended Instructional Strategy. The report featured 11 educators from the US as exemplars and blended personal learning. Congratulations to Alex Griffiths from Oshkosh West High School, who was there last time, last year at that time, selected based on her outstanding work in personalizing learning in partnership with her technology integrator, Kristy Levy. We would like to, you can please check on the link for more detail regarding this. And lastly, shortened Superintendent's abbreviated calendar from the past week that's included at this evening. So that completes the Superintendent's Good News Report for this week.
Thank you. Do we have any other reports from committee chairs? All right, slow, slow week. All right, then we're gonna go right into our workshop for the District Student Assessment Results Workshop with Mrs. Conrad.
So tonight, we're going to be looking at District-wide Data Accountability Report. This is going to be the first part of a report. The second part is going to come as soon as our school and district report cards are publicly released, I will come and update with additional accountability measures. So I'm gonna start off tonight, and a little bit later in the presentation, Dr. Brown and Dr. Gunlock are going to join me as well. So first off, as a reminder, in the Wisconsin State Assessment System, we have the following assessments that are given in a standardized format, and those are the ACT statewide in Grade 11, ACT Aspire for Grades 9 and 10, the Wisconsin Forward Exam for Grades 3 through 8, and remember, this is the second year that we have administered the Forward Exam. And then DLM is Dynamic Learning Maps, which is an alternative assessment for students with significant disabilities. And also remember that our school report cards are scheduled to be released in November, or actually, it's November now, but mid-November. When we look at our strategic plan, accountability scores in state assessments really inform how we're doing in our progress in Priority 1 and Priority 5 of our strategic plan. And in your folders tonight, you have two, you have two papers that are included in there. One of them is your strategic plan, is our strategic plan, I should say, and the other one is our, is the scorecard and the metrics that match up with each of those priority areas. So it might be helpful if you have those two out, because throughout the presentation, I will refer to which scorecard piece, which metric piece, and it refers to, and which priority area that that measure is indicating. So if you remember when we started talking about metrics for the strategic plan, that there were, there were levels of metrics and measures that we are looking at within a school district, and we had Levels 1, 2, and 3, which are really meant to be board and community dashboard data, which is that, those high-level metrics, and we are going to be looking more at higher-level metrics today. But we also have within our district our Levels 4 and 5, and those levels of metrics, and when we talk about, are really meant for parents, students, and staff, and as part of their data dashboard. And if you recall from in July, August timeframe, we talked about a new data warehouse, a new data tool that we're using, which is EdgeClimber, and that really brings us into the Levels 4, 5, and 6, and getting access. Today, we're really going to stay up in those upper levels of, in those upper levels of metrics. And if you recall, when we started talking about this infographic and the different levels of metrics, I really wanted the arrows to point from, going from Level 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, rather than going 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, because it's really not about what the board is driving, what's going on, it's really our children and our student learning that's driving everything. And so, starting with Level 6, that individual student, and informing all of our pieces going up from there. The data sources that we monitor on a regular basis in Levels 3, 4, 5, and 6 are up here. If you look at the left-hand column, the internal student assessment data that we are monitoring is PALS, and I will be talking about PALS, that's the Phasmic Assessment for Early Literacy Awareness Pieces. Teaching Strategies Gold at 4K. Developmental Reading Assessment, you're gonna see that as DRA as we go through the presentation. Our writing assessments that we have, Scholastic Reading Inventory in Grades 6 through 10, Advantage Math Recovery, and so that's the math assessment we use in K through 5, our end-of-the-year math assessments in 5 through 8, and Common Content Area Writing Assessments that we established last school year, and that we're starting to use as metrics. In addition to that, which we are not going to talk about tonight, is attendance, truancy, dropout rate, graduation rate, we will talk about tonight, post-secondary enrollment, behavior discipline, and student progress and grades. So that's a whole lot to monitor, so how do you pull that, how do you start to pull that all together? Well, we constantly are talking about this, about the levels and layers of accountability, and making sure that we're pulling in one direction as we are looking at these metrics and as we are looking at data. And just to refocus us, we're gonna be really looking at district-wide indicators today. So let's get started. In the presentation, I'm gonna go from macro to micro, so we're gonna go from big scale towards the end of a student's career with us in the Oshkosh area School District towards graduation, all the way down to our elementary students. So, starting off with the ACT. So our first set of data that I have up here is for our Oshkosh area School District Graduates ACT. When you look at the ACT for graduates, this is at the, when students graduate for the class of 2017, everybody in the state of Wisconsin and all of our juniors take the ACT, but then they have other opportunities and multiple opportunities to retake it. And so, this composite score, the average score, this is from all the other years, and when we get to the class of 2017, that is where they landed, not necessarily where they scored as juniors, but when they've graduated, this was their final average composite score. And as you can see, that we have, we have trended down in our average score. Part of the reason is, is that you recall that now all juniors take that, all seniors that have graduated have at least taken the ACT once. And you can see where we landed with that, so we're at a 19.7 average composite score. You're gonna see where our juniors are today, though, so that'll be interesting. At the state, the composite score for graduates was at 20.5, and this was the second graduating class that took the ACT. So here's where we start with our scorecard measures. If you look at your scorecard in Priority Area 1, this is the 7th measure, the 7th metric that's on there. And one of the questions is, is how successful is the overall student population on the ACT? So this is, this was just released last month, this is how our juniors, they are going to be our graduates for the class of 2018, did on the ACT. Going from English Language Arts all over, all the way over to the composite on the right-hand side. And so, last year, our graduates was at a 19.7, our composite for our juniors this year is 20.1. And so, we've made some significant increases there. As you can also see, historically, the Oshkosh area School District has performed very well in math, and we continue, and our juniors continue that trend when it comes in math. One thing to remember about writing, it looks like, oh my gosh, what happened in writing? Remember, writing is out of 12 and not out of 36. And so, we're right at about the state average when it comes to writing on the ACT. A second measure that's on your, is on your scorecard and that we also keep track of, is our four-year graduation rate. The statewide graduation rate for the class of 2016 is at 89%. The class of 2017 graduation rate has not been released yet, that's why you see coming soon. It hasn't been publicly released, but we can see that we've had a little bit of a downward tick within our graduation rate, but our five-year, down at the bottom, our five-year graduation rate and our six-year graduation rate is at 93%, and we continue to be strong. And I will do a little prediction here, do you think our graduation rate went up or down for the class of 2017? I'm smiling, so, that'll be a clue. We, we have, we have done well, so, coming, coming, coming soon to a, to another report near you. So, and that's where we are with our graduation rate. A second scorecard measure is how long does it take students to graduate high school in the Oshkosh area School District compared to the state average? And as you can see, once again, we are ahead of the state average when it comes to graduation rate, and also, students persist with us. In other words, they may not have graduated in four years, but we have programs and we have things in place that, we know how important that diploma is. So we have a 93.7 grad, 97.93.7% five-year graduation rate, and we're at 94.4% for a six-year graduation rate, which, once again, outperforms the, outperforms the state by several percentage points. So this is also very interesting, how do we compare to other school, larger school districts when it comes to graduation rate? Once again, the statewide graduation rate is 89%, and Oshkosh is over to the right in the fuchsia, or hot pink color, compared to, compared to other districts within our, within our region. So we're also, we're also performing well in that area as well. So also on your scorecard in Priority Area 5, talks about initial post-secondary enrollment trends, and this is a, this is a big measure when we start looking at students being college, career, and community ready. What are their post-secondary plans? And do the plans that they have for post-secondary match with what they say you're actually are going to do? So on this chart here, we have been keeping track since the class of 2013, we just have released the class of 2016, they're certified, what did they do, what did they actually enroll in? And for our class of 2016, we had 52% in pink. We had 52% of our 2016 graduates said, or planned to enroll in a four-year university. Actually, either the first semester out of school, or the second semester out of high school, 34.6% actually enrolled. For a two-year, 13.9% indicated that they were going to enroll in a two-year or a technical college, and 14.5% actually enrolled. So altogether, 50% of our 2016 graduating class actually enrolled somewhere after that. And the state average is 59.8% is there was actual enrollment. So one question that we're trying to, so that, to me, that like raises a lot of questions, and it's been raising a lot of questions for me over the past few years. And so, with academic and career planning and being college, career, and community ready, we know you have a plan, are you actually following through or matching up with your plans? Or if you had parallel plans, are they, are they matching up? And so what we're really working on is figuring out, if, if only 50% of you enrolled, then what's going on with the other 50% of graduates? You know, where, where were you employed? Were you ready to be employed? What did that look like? Do you have other options? A question that came up when we looked at this data with OFRE, Oshkosh for Education on Thursday, was, well, maybe students are having gap years, do you know about subsequent enrollment? And we do know about subsequent enrollment for the class of 2015, 14, and 13, and it's a very low percentage, like 1 to 2% will eventually, or is looking like they enroll down the road, you know, maybe when they're a little bit older, their, their plans are firm up, they've, they're looking for a different career. But as of right now, that, that's the big question for me, so what are our students doing and where are they going? And are they ready? Are they ready and are they prepared? So that's one of the things that we're doing with academic and career planning.
I would like to see us take a broader view of post-secondary education, to include the military.
Absolutely.
Because many of our students go into the military for a couple of purposes.
3.5%. Yep.
Excuse me, one of the reasons why they choose to do that, because they want to serve their country, of course, but also to gain skills that they can use in the civilian world, and also to gain funds to do additional training. So I'd like to see us broaden this view of post-secondary enrollment to include post-secondary education, which would include the military as we go forward. Thank you.
No, absolutely, and right, for the class of 2016, 3.5%. So if we do that, that's still, we're still have a significant percent of our population where, you know, what are the, where are they going with that? So let's take a look at, at some more numbers in a little bit, in a little bit deeper. So we're first going to start off with math, and we're gonna start off with our Forward Exam. And so these are, this is Grades 3 through 8, and it's the Forward Exam and the Dynamic Learning Maps, because we do have a small percentage of students that are taking the alternative assessment. So what we have up here is for the 2016-2017 school year, in blue is the percentage of students that scored advanced, in hot pink is our percentage of students that scored proficient, yellow is basic, and red is below basic. We had a very high test participation rate this school year, so you're going to see very little of the, of the grade part, where no test was administered or no test was given. And so you can see that there, there looks like there's a downward trend. You can't really talk about trends, because that, each of these is a separate grade level and needs to be treated that way. Across the state, we were seeing there's been a downtick, and then there are percent of students that are proficient at the 8th grade level in math, and so I don't know if that's the assessment or the expectations, but that's, that's really common. Overall, we're above the state average when it comes to performance on, when it comes to performance on math. Taking a little bit different views, so that you can kind of see who's, who's proficient and who's advanced. Green is the percent that's proficient, and red is the percent in, in not proficient. You'll notice that 3rd grade, 51.7%, that is the first time those students have taken that assessment, and we are really looking at the Bridges curriculum and attributing some of that to the, to the uptick in 3rd and 4th grade when it comes to that piece. We really did outperform, students made a lot of growth this past, past year in those grade levels. And so, once again, taking a look at 8th grade. Another one of your scorecard measures is Priority Area 1 in Number 3, and the question was, is how many students are proficient in math by 8th grade? A good predictor of whether a student is going to graduate on time is their proficiency in math in 8th grade. A good predictor of how a student is going to perform in high school and graduate on time is also their 3rd grade reading level, and we'll get to that one as well. So for this past school year, the spring of 2017, 33.8% of Oshkosh area School District 8th graders were proficient or advanced on math on the Forward Exam. We do have internal measures, and so we have our 8th grade end-of-the-year math assessment, and so that is a cumulative assessment of the entire 8th grade curriculum. And it's, it's a, it's a pretty rigorous test, and we had 69.4% of 8th graders were proficient on that assessment, and that does not include the 8th graders that were in high school algebra, because they were taking the algebra end-of-the-year assessment when they did that. So, so looking at that, our internal indicators show a higher... So, so looking at that, our internal indicators show a higher, um, a higher percentage there. So we're working on that from a curriculum lens to say, you know, what's, what's going on with that? Because our end of the year assessment should be a little bit better predictor of, of what's going on in the forward exam. But when we look at assessments that we give internally in a district, they are curriculum-based. In other words, they're based off of exactly the curriculum that we are teaching within our district. And so, um, that's another piece as well to be aware of. Going on to our ninth and tenth graders, um, how did they perform in math? Remember that our ninth and tenth graders take the ACT Aspire, which is leading up to the actual ACT in grade eleven. Um, the ACT Aspire, um, has different categories, so to speak. They don't go advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. They do exceeding, ready, close, and in need of support. Um, and so you can see up there for, um, math where our ninth and tenth graders are, they're about in the same spot. Um, ready, um, and then close, and you can see in need of, of support. And right now we have about thirty-nine point six percent of tenth graders, um, have been identified in, in the area of need of support.
What are we doing to support them?
We are doing lots of things to support them. And that, and that's going to be the question here is, and we will talk more about that, what are the things that we, they have in place? Uh, I think the big thing is, is that you're, you're, we're looking at numbers from a standardized test. And especially with ACT Aspire with ninth and tenth graders, we've, we've been struggling a little bit to get ninth and tenth graders. And we talked about this, to get them, um, engaged and really taking this seriously. And Cassie's smiling at me over here because, um, for our ninth and tenth graders, they're not really seeing the relevance or what this is, is doing for them or what their purpose is. Um, there's a lot more engagement in the ACT. And so when we look at this, we also take a look at, um, does this, does this match up with what we're seeing in the classroom? Does this match up with what we're seeing in other assessments? Because we're not always sure that our students are giving their best effort in ninth and tenth grade on the ACT Aspire. So, um, but I will talk about that as far as what the supports are. When we get into the actual, uh, grade eleven, the ACT, um, we looked at the composite scores of our eleventh graders, um, on an earlier slide. But when we look at it from a college readiness lens or a proficiency lens, um, we have forty-one point eight percent of our eleventh graders were proficient in the ACT compared to thirty-five point seven percent at the state level. So if you look at that from a composite score lens, like that thirty-six ACT, Ashkesh in math, we're at a twenty point seven. And statewide, that's at twenty point zero. So now, uh, a big question that comes up is how are, how are we performing in math compared to other, to other districts? And so what I have up here is a chart from our two thousand sixteen forward exam in math and our two thousand seventeen forward exam in math. And the districts that we have up there are districts that are near us or touch us. So in other words, you can think of them as our competitors, so to speak, um, up there. So in two thousand sixteen, you can see where the state average is in pink. And you can see where Ashkesh is, the percent that we're proficient, um, in that green lime color. We come over to two thousand seventeen, you can see where the state average is, the same districts, and where Ashkesh is, um, when it comes to the percent of students that are proficient. Um, because the question that's, that's, that's constantly asked of me is, you know, how are we doing compared to other districts? And, and are we moving in the needle? And, um, and we, we did perform, we did perform better this, this past school year when it came to, um, the percent of students that were proficient. Um, when it came to, when it came to math and English Language Arts, so. Moving on to reading. So how is the Ashkesh Area School District performing by grade level in reading? Um, so for our kindergarten and first and second graders, we give PALS. Um, and so that's screening for early literacy, uh, early literacy skills. And so you can see how we've compared in the spring across the different, um, categories. Um, one thing that we have noticed, and this is across our community, is that some of our students are not coming ready, um, ready with those early literacy skills. And, and we're, we're having to play some, we're having to play some catch-up, um, with students as they're, as they're coming in. Um, not, I mean, it is, it is what it is. And we meet students where they're at and, and work really hard to get them, um, the skills that they need to, um, to be performing. Um, we know how important it is that students are reading at grade level at the end of third grade and working hard to do that. So this is where, um, our kindergartens, first and second graders were, um, in the spring of two thousand seventeen when it comes to, um, literacy, early literacy skills.
Could you please clarify your district on there since you have kindergarten one and two? What does district refer to then?
So what district means is if we put together all of the students in kindergarten, in kindergarten, grades one and grades two together as a district, seventy-one point nine percent of the students that took PALS were hitting benchmark. So English Language Arts, remember that on the forward exam, they no longer look at just reading or just writing. Um, and when we look at PALS and some other measures, it was just looking at reading skills. So as we start to look at the next slides and we start looking at the percentages here, it's looking at speaking and listening, um, writing and reading. Um, there's not speaking on the forward exam, but there is a listening component. And so students do have to listen to a pa, like listen to a passage, view a, view a video, and then they're tested on their, they're assessed on their comprehension from there. So that's also included in these pieces here. So remember, once again, blue is advanced and hot pink is proficient. And so this is how our students are performing, grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. And you can see the trend that when you look at this here, as students go into middle school and go into middle school and getting into eighth grade, that their performance on English Language Arts is actually going up. And that tends to be our trend in the Ashkesh Area School District, that, um, students in our earlier grades are not testing, so to speak, or performing as well on standardized tests. But as they start to get into the middle school and high school levels, they're performing better on those assessments. That just tends to be a trend, um, in the Ashkesh Area School District. So there's where we are at. To look at just who is proficient or the percent proficient, this looks a little bit easier to look at. Um, green is the percent of students that are proficient, um, and red is not proficient. And so you can see where we, we are at. Across the grade levels, we have made some, we've definitely made some improvements in the percent of students that are proficient on, in English Language Arts on the forward exam. Because one of the main questions was, is on your scorecard, is how many third graders are proficient readers? And so here's the answer to that. So, um, on the forward exam, thirty-eight point one percent of the third graders were proficient, advanced in English Language Arts. But remember, that's, that's the reading, writing, and the language subtest. If we look at, um, thirty-eight point four percent of Ashkesh Area School District elementary students scored proficient or advanced and their basic is thirty-four point, um, seven. And then seventy-six percent met the developmental reading assessment benchmark for two thousand sixteen and seven. So in other words, in our elementary schools, if you were, if you were, you ask me, what percent of your students are reading, reading at grade level? Um, we have seventy-six percent of students are reading at grade level at the end of two thousand and seventeen, in spring two thousand seventeen. If we look at just grades three through five in just reading, so if you're matching that up with the forward exam, eighty-two point six percent were reading at grade level, if that makes sense. Because you can't, on those, on the standardized assessments, you can't pull out, um, exactly, um, the number of students there. You can't pull, pull out just the reading pieces of it. So how are we doing on ELA going into grades nine and ten? Um, ACT Aspire, once again, um, they have things a little bit differently. They don't give you an EL, so forward exam gives you an ELA score. And ACT is going to give you an ELA score. ACT Aspire doesn't give you an ELA score. So, um, they have reading and English, so that's the best I could, I put together there. Um, and you can see where our students are with, um, in need of support and readiness and, um, ready, close, and in need of support. And then where they are in the English components. The English components are more the, um, the language conventions, the writing pieces, which you would traditionally think of as, as English. So then when we get to the, the ACT, ACT does give you an ELA score. Um, and remember, that's a combination of, um, the English, the reading, and the writing pieces of it. And for our eleventh graders, we had thirty-seven percent, um, were proficient. Where the state was thirty-nine point five percent. If you come down to, uh, the composite for ELA, we have seventeen point nine. And statewide, that was eighteen point three. So, um, once again, our trend is, is holding up in, in those areas. So then how do we, um, how do we compare when we start to look at districts? Um, pink is the state average and then the, the green is where Ashkesh is. And you can see that we have definitely made some growth in the ELA portion of, in the percent of our students that are, um, proficient. Um, five percent is statistically significant when you start looking at standardized tests. So, um, so we're making some, we're making some progress there. Then going on into, uh, going on into science, um, on the forward exam, uh, we give the science assessment in fourth grade and eighth grade. Uh, in the forward exam, ACT Aspire and ACT does test, um, science or does assess science as well. Um, we're, um, we're doing great in those, um, areas. And you can see where we are with, um, our proficiencies. If I flip over to the next slide, there we go. Um, you can see fifty-two point eight percent were proficient in fourth grade and forty-six point seven percent, um, in eighth grade when it came to science. Um, going on to the, going on to the ACT, um, the percent proficient, considered proficient in science would be thirty-two point nine and thirty-one point seven percent at the state. And then if you come down, you can see for Ashkesh, we were at twenty point six as our composite. And statewide in science is twenty point four. I always think it's interesting when you start to compare the two there, what they consider proficient and then what the ACT composite is. Because that doesn't, for me, it doesn't always match up what, um, you know, what their, what their bar, to me, it's like measuring, are you, are you measuring the length using centimeters? Are you measuring it using inches? And so sometimes it makes more sense when you have the two comparisons side by side. Um, going on into social studies, remember our tenth graders also have to take the forward exam for social studies. So we have scores in fourth, eighth, and tenth. Um, and then, so if we flip to just where we are with proficiency, um, our students in fourth, eighth, and tenth, you can see we're at fifty-three, fifty, and fifty-four percent. I also think this is really interesting when we start to look at science and social studies and the assessment and, and where our students are, their percent proficiency. Because if you think about standardized assessments and you think about, especially in the social studies area, our standardized assessments are mostly, aren't they, aren't they really reading tests? Um, when you think about it, when you think about, when you're looking at social studies, um, there are absolutely like concepts and background knowledge that you need there. But, um, really those skills for, for reading and reading like a, reading like a historian, reading like a social scientist. Um, and or then in the science area too, there's a, there's a lot of skills that come in that. So, uh, something that I want you to think about or, or consider as our students are performing there. The next part that we always get into is talking about subgroups and minding the gap. Because all of the data that I just presented is, is about all students and in general. So the performance subgroups that we're going to look at is students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, and race and ethnicity. So how are subgroups of students compared to their peers? Um, the first group that we have up here is students with disabilities. And in the state of Wisconsin, there is a large gap between our students without disabilities and our students with disabilities when it comes to, when it comes to assessments. And that's, and once, and that's very apparent as you start to, as you're going to start to look at our, um, start to look at our scores. So for our English Language Arts, um, you can see how big the gap is between students that are advanced and proficient and the percent of students, um, with dis, with disabilities. Right now I'm presenting the numbers and this, and you're going to look at this and go, my goodness, we know what's going on. We're going to talk more about this because the, the numbers are what the numbers are and the percents are what the percents are. Um, but the real conversation is about, is what are we doing? What are our students doing? And, and who are the, who are the children behind those numbers? Um, so there are gaps and they're there. Students with disabilities, um, in math, um, comparison, in comparison, uh, once again, we do, we absolutely have, um, we have gaps there with our students with disabilities, performance gaps. Um, when we get into grade eleven, um, ACT Aspire doesn't let you look at, it's, there's not a clean way to look at the gap pieces that I could put up like on a screen. So I do have ACT up here and students with disabilities. This is, this is interesting. Um, in our English Language Arts scores, um, students without disability, their average composite score was eighteen point six in English Language Arts. If you're students with, a student with disability, your average was, um, was twelve point eight. Um, as you start to look at that. Um, when we look at math, um, we would, we would expect, because of the way that the Ashkesh Area School District performs in math, that the gap would be smaller, the gap is smaller when it comes to math. Um, students without disabilities, twenty point four, and students with sixteen point one. English Language Learners. Um, for our English Language Learners, um, when we start to look at gaps here, the gap has actually widened for our English Language Learners. And, um, and maybe this is audience participation could, why would you think that our English Language Learner gap has, has grown in the Ashkesh Area School District?
Is it more English Language Learners?
That are at level one or that are newcomers to the country?
Correct. Oh, good.
Yes. And so. So, um, his, so for, pre, you know, previous years to this, our, a lot of our English Language Learners were, um, there's, there's six levels. Six, level six would be considered a student is English proficient. Um, seven would be they're a native speaker, but, um, six would be English proficient. We have more students that are at levels one and two or newcomers to the country than we ever had before. And so, once again, imagine that you have, you're, you're just now learning the English language and you need to take a standardized test in English. Um, with some, with some accommodations, but you're, you know, so picture whatever language you want to use. Maybe it's to do a standardized test. So, um, I'm not surprised that our gaps have grown, um, with our, with our English learners. And you're going to see that, um, and the same thing with, um, math. Um, some of our students, um, this is, this is not an excuse but a reason. But, um, some of our students that are, that are new to us from, in the Ashkesh Area School District, um, are, we call them, the acronym is SLIF. Um, they've had significant or limited interrupted formal education. And so if, if you have never attended a school, it, it's kind of hard to get caught up in whole, you know, math or, um, those English Language Arts pieces, like we're learning how to do school first and foremost. Um, and then once again, you're going to see the big difference, the big gap when it comes to the ACT. So once again, imagine that you were, um, you were in, you know, you're new to the country, whatever language you want to take the ACT and, and, and we're absolutely going to have gaps. This was, this was the biggest, like when I saw this, I was like, this, this graph makes sense. And it's, and, um, that's, that composite is much lower than it was last year. Um, if you look in math, once again, but the math gap is smaller because math is an international language. So the second group that we're looking at is, is, um, our students that are economically disadvantaged. And so economically disadvantaged would be any student that would be on free and reduced lunch. And so as you start to look at this, um, the percent of students that were proficient in advance that are not economically disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged, we absolutely have gaps. Um, students in math, um, the same thing. Um, wow, yeah, that one, that one's grown a little bit. And then as you start to look at, um, the ACT with, um, English Language Arts, you can see not and economically disadvantaged where the gaps are. And then as you would expect, math, we're, we, uh, once again, um, not in economically disadvantaged with math scores. Race and ethnicity, um, this one's hard to see, but the, the areas that we can report out on, and in other words, we have enough students within that, um, within that group. Um, we have American, Indian, Asian, Black, Hispanic, um, white, or two or more, reported two or more self-reported races. And you can see that we definitely have, um, gaps when compared to their, um, to their white peers in English Language Arts. And then going on to math, um, we're going to see the same, we're going to see the same type of gaps. So, um, let's see what our next one is. Um, when it comes to ACT, um, you can see where our students are performing their average composite score in English Language Arts. Also as a board, as you're reviewing this, you're going, Julia, I hope that you send this to me so that I could look at this more closely. You are absolutely going to get this. I will send you the link as soon as we're done here tonight. Um, and then for grade eleven, here's for math. And once again, you can see the gaps aren't as large and, and that trend stays the same. So this next thing, and this gets back to Barb's question on what are you doing for students that are in need of support? And so one thing that when you work with data is we, and you start looking at these things, um, we talk about minding the gap and the gap between, you know, performance and of those performance groups, those subgroups. And, and one thing that, um, I've been doing is I've been, in looking at the data and the overlaps of how those subgroups interplay with each other. Because we, we isolate out students with disabilities, we isolate out English Language Learners, we isolate out, you know, race, ethnicity, et cetera, and then our economically disadvantaged. But as I started to look at those numbers and I started to, um, look at the, the background of our students, because really those, those subgroups or demographics represent the background of our, of our children that in the Ashkesh Area School District. This, this, I think, is very interesting. When you look at a, the student with disabilities, so a student that has an IEP, seventy-five percent of our students with disabilities are economically disadvantaged in the Ashkesh Area School District. Okay? English Language Learners, when we look at our ELs, eighty percent of our ELs are. English language learners, when we look at our ELS, eighty percent of our ELS are economically disadvantaged in the Ashkosh Area School District. In other words, they qualify for free and reduced lunch. Race and ethnicity. So thirty percent of our white students are economically disadvantaged, seventy percent of our students that are non, are non-white students are economically disadvantaged. So as I start looking at these and I start thinking about, what are, you know, what are the strategies and how do we, how do we work with schools and, and where do we go from here? And where, you know, how do you look at gaps? How do you address the needs of support? When, when you look at this, when you start to look at strategies, where do we need to focus our strategies?
The economy.
Well, there's the economy pieces, but I, I think it's more about what are their strategies that work with students and families that are economically disadvantaged or that are living in poverty? Because no matter, no matter what that subgroup, no matter what your background is, this is, this goes across all of those within our school district and something that we really have to keep in mind. Not an excuse, but something that, but a reason, like we need to really be looking at the backgrounds of our, of our children. And so what are those, what are those strategies? So if we're truly minding the gap and we're starting to look at that, what are those things that we need to put into, what are those things that we need to put into place to address that? So what supports are we putting into place? Are we, are we getting students into literacy skills classes at the high school level so that they start to get the support, to get their, those reading levels up to the expectation that we need to be college ready or career ready? Are we, you know, do we have the students in the lit skills class? Do we have those supports for students with, with disabilities or with IEPs? Are we getting those supports to them and in those classes? My next, my next question, everybody, is do we have high expectations for those students? And is our curriculum aligned and, and designed so that we have high expectations? Because students aren't going to perform on standardized tests if they're not asked to perform at that high level on a daily basis within our classrooms. And so those are the types of things that we're, that we're, that we're talking about and we have to mind when we're minding, when we're minding the gap. The other thing is that all this data that I was, that I was pushing out to you guys tonight, it probably raises a lot of questions. And none of, none of, when we present data, none of it is the answer, but it's, it's using the data as a flashlight to get to those next steps. We are monitoring levels four, five, and six data so that we are, we're looking at, we're looking at individual students, we're looking at classrooms, we're looking at schools and grade levels. And we'll talk more about that with school report cards and in an upcoming education committee workshop on, on how we're actually doing that so that we are, we are monitoring and keeping a close watch on how students are doing so that we can make adjustments and we can get supports in much faster. Working with individual schools, grade levels, and classrooms based on those data indicators, what is it, what is it saying? Not hunches, but what do we know about those students and making those adjustments to instruction and to support? And I just said that, data used to guide instruction in our next steps with our, next steps with our students. So data's not meant to be the answer, data's meant to be the flashlight and to start to inform those next steps. But as always, I give you cautions and conclusions. And as we put numbers up there and you start to look at the numbers, once again, I, I put this analogy in place about getting like our health scorecard. So you know, this summer, we all did health assess, well, I did, if you're a school district employee, you did a health assessment this summer. I did a health assessment this summer and you, and you get your numbers back, right? And so you look at your numbers and you're, sometimes you'll get your numbers and you, yes! And sometimes you look at your numbers and, ooh, I, I need to, I need to, I need to do something. I'm either going to owe my numbers and do something about it or not. And so when we look at our numbers, our, the numbers are the numbers. But behind every single, when I look at that number, that, the number of my health assessment doesn't say about who I am as a person or about my hopes and dreams and everything else. When we looked at those numbers on the screen and we talked about that, there is a child behind every single one of those numbers. And students are more than just a number and, and we, and we know that every single day as educators as we're doing that, but we can get caught up in numbers and we can got, get caught up in accountability. So I caution us on that. The other thing is assessment of learning versus assessment for learning. The numbers that I, that I showed you today to keep on with the health analogy is basically the autopsy of last school year is saying, you know, this is, this is what happened. I want us to be paying attention to the numbers for our students right now. Absolutely, we take a look at what happened, we're going to make adjustments, we're going to keep informed, but I want us to be monitoring the numbers and working with level five and level six data that's really going to be making a difference in the classrooms and with students right now. So, and that's assessment of learning. And once again, this is all starting points of identifying areas in need and further examination. And, and you know from all of the work that we've been doing, we're, we're already on that. And we'll be talking more about that at the education committee, specifically what are those strategies that we're doing. The other piece behind us is that state testing data, ed lagging indicators, I believe last year I had said to you, I'm predicting that our scores are going to go up and they did. And so I'm predicting that once again, our scores are, are going to continue to go up. But Kim and I, Kim and I were talking about this today and we were talking about if we would have made this dramatic jump in our test scores this past school year, I would have, I would have been very skeptical and I wouldn't have liked that. Because anytime that you see a dramatic jump in standardized test scores, that makes you go, hmm. Just like anybody that's, that's trying to get on a healthy lifestyle or if you're trying to lose weight, drastically dropping a huge amount of weight and then maintaining that, it's, it's, that's not easy to do. And I want us to, doing those incremental little lifestyle changes and getting, getting you to that goal weight is really the way you can do it and the way you want to manage it. When we're talking about a school system, I want us just making those incremental growth and making those, those jumps that way because we can maintain it and I know it's true growth and not artificial growth when it comes to student learning, if, if that makes sense. So if we would have had some dramatic jump, I would have been, there's something going on here with the data because that, that, that wouldn't have shown true growth and sustainable growth. We're, we absolutely have predicted needs when it comes to those gaps. But I'm also predicting, and we've already seen that, you saw that in our math scores at the elementary level, that the Bridges curriculum going into place, you already saw that increase for third grade and fourth grade, I'm predicting that's going to carry through. The other piece is that we will have full implementation of the new literacy curriculum that just went into place, full implementation this fall. And so I'm expecting that we're going to see some increases due to that as well. So some predictions there. So I'm going to invite Dave and Kim up here for our next part to talk about our purpose. And I'm going to turn it over to Dave for a little bit.
So basically, you've had a lot of information kind of thrown at you here this evening and we wanted to kind of cycle you back to what our purpose is, which is really to prepare students for their future. And the one thing we've noticed is that preparing them for their future really does require a much bigger picture. What you've, what you've received to date is, is what's sort of in the center of that picture. You know, it, it's really clear, it's really there, but it's not the full picture. And we wanted to kind of round it out with a few other things because the full picture is, is much more comprehensive. We have, we have a very comprehensive set of offerings that we offer students in the Ashkosh Area School District. And the, the study that UW Ashkosh did on our open enrollment numbers confirms that parents make their choices to which district they want to go to based upon having the whole picture, not necessarily based upon one or two factors. And, and we thought there was some information that we ought to add to, to all the assessment information that might help build out some things as well. Part of these are things that you can be very proud of as a school board and as a community because we certainly are proud of them and, and our teachers have done some phenomenal work in this area. One of them honestly is, is kudos to the, to the board, Nashgosh for Education. This district has been featured by Google in their Transformation Center around the area of community engagement. We are exemplar, one of very few districts that they highlighted, those are actually our kids. In addition, we were featured as one of seven districts in the United States and United Kingdom in the Google Impact Portrait. In other words, how do you move ahead with personalized learning? How do districts do that the right way without sacrificing things in other areas? So that, that was another thing that we were very, very proud of. There are a lot of opportunities for our teachers to get in front of other teachers and other teachers are very interested in how to replicate what's going on here. If you look at the SLATE conference, we've had staff presenting there for the last six years straight and we, we've actually gotten a lot of positive feedback from that. We presented at the Association for Supervision Curriculum Development in 2013 and 2017. We are, we also received the ASCD Teacher Impact Grant. That was one of seven districts in the United States that, that actually received that full grant and we've been implementing that as we go. The ISTI Conference, we presented four years in the past, several, at 2013, 14, 16, and 17. But what was really interesting this year was we had four different teacher groups that presented in 2017 at the ISTI Conference. I sat in all four of those sessions and, and watched them. And what was amazing is they didn't talk about technology at all. They talked totally about instruction, curricular changes, activity changes, and what they were doing. Technology was an implicit support, but it wasn't the focus of their conversation. I actually think I texted Julie back, she was back here saying, you'd be so proud of them. Nobody said one word about technology yet. I know that's a bad thing for me to say, but I was really proud of that. We're also presenting and telling our story at the, the upcoming State Education Convention that is focused on the same thing that we presented at the Google On Air Conference last year on how we are using community partnerships to drive forward the strategic plan. So those are just some examples of that. And of course, what Stan had mentioned as part of the Superintendent's Good News Report, the recent publication, the Foundation for Blended Nonline Learning, picked 11 classrooms across the United States and they picked Alex Griffith's classroom here at Ashkosh West. And part of that, in fact, that actual picture was after their presentation at the ISTI Conference. The researchers found them out and then brought them forward and took, you know, that's when they started looking at them and, and really realized it was something pretty special going on there. So that's just in, in relation to some, some technology and instructional improvements and I'll turn it over to Kim for some other items.
So, so one of the key things is we are very proud of our Ashkosh teachers because they are being invited to present in many places. And so I just put a few of those up there. The Wisconsin State Reading Association, we have several teachers that are presenting each year at that conference. The International Reading Association, we've had people presenting at that also many years in a row. This year, we also had at the National Math Recovery Association, you saw that in the Good News Report tonight. But that was a really big deal because they don't, sometimes you think, well, yeah, you just put your name and you get accepted. It's very difficult to get accepted to present, especially at the national, international conferences. And the National Math Recovery, even though it says national, we have people coming from all over the world to that. And same with, of course, with the International Reading Association. We have the College Board AP Honor Roll. A lot of our teachers who are AP teachers are being invited as key teachers to be leaders in the AP exam. And then, of course, Wisconsin DPI. If you start looking to see who's on the committees, who's helping formulate, you know, standards, taking a look at redoing those as adoptions are coming up over again, we have our Ashkosh teachers represented in all of those groups and that's because they are seeking us out because of the work that we do in our district. So it's, it's pretty exciting to know that our, our district is doing something right that people are looking.
So another case study that we just were, we were invited to participate is in a recently arrived English learners study. We call them newcomers, but this past winter, we had a University of Oregon researcher, they were charged by the Council of Chief State School Officers to do a case study on how students with refugee background are being resettled and, and are being acclimated into schools. State, they were, each state was asked to recommend different districts and we were recognized as one of the leaders in students, acclimating students with refugee background into our school district and welcoming students and families into our communities. And so we were one of five districts nationally that were featured in this case study between the University of Washington, University of Oregon, and UC San Diego. And finally, I have this, I, I actually asked Dave to, to put this up here because when we are talking about accountability and when we're talking about how we are doing as a district, every single time you meet as a board and we send this out, to me, this is almost like our accountability scorecard. Because when we look at this, this is students going out and they're performing in the community, they're, they are doing it to an authentic audience, they're shining as, as a whole student, as a whole child, as a whole young adult. When we look at all of these things, you can see all of the amazing things our teachers are doing, you can't measure that on a standardized test. And so every single day when we're, when our students are performing as student athletes and we're seeing students in concerts and they're being featured on TV and, and they're doing all those things in the community, we are so proud of them because those are the things that we want them to be doing to be college, career, and community ready. So when you ask me about accountability, when we ask about when students are just a number, that Superintendent's Good News Report is our accountability every two weeks. And I believe it was...
Questions.
Every court, I have a question and a comment. The comment is on the data related to the grade level information on students with disabilities and ELL by grade level for the district, it would, it would be helpful to have a referent point. So having the state numbers would be helpful instead of just having a single number for Ashkosh that doesn't really tell us how we are in comparison with the state and/or other districts. And secondly, our staff spends a great deal of time and puts together some phenomenal reports by way of PowerPoints. Oftentimes, they're presented here at the board meeting. They don't come to us in advance so that we can maybe look at them ahead of time, but I know you're busy, so I get that. But my, my question is, are these then put on the district website so that the general public has access to these? Either for people who want to go back and take a look at these or board members who want to go back and take a look at these or people who missed the presentation and are just curious about what's going on?
That's a, that's a great question. I know, I know some are contained in like the board agendas or minutes. We can go back and access those, but I don't know if that's always the case. That's a great suggestion.
So would people know how to do that and how many clicks would it take?
Well, exactly. The, the other thing I know that the board has requested and that we're, we're working on and, and I will share with you when we do the, the state report card releases, is that having slides that are matched up to the scorecard that you have directly on there, that'll be coming in our next presentation. And so assembling that from P one point one all the way to P five point, et cetera, going, going down there on the scorecard and that being posted to the website, that was always the, that was always the vision to have that dashboard piece. And so, yeah, that, that's a great suggestion.
The other thing that we have to, to think about too is, is how are people going to want to consume the information? Because in some cases, consuming a PowerPoint deck without some background information can be, can be somewhat confusing, but, but it works and we can turn those into PDFs. That makes it really easy. The other thing that we can do is this is videotaped and it's archived and, and what it would be, what I think not too difficult to do is also post this on our district YouTube channel. So if somebody actually wants to watch the actual part of the presentation that they want to see, they'll be, make that a little bit easier and connect those two documents together. I think that could be very doable and, and might, might help because what's going to happen is somebody's going to want the information, but they're not all going to want it exactly the same way. So we'll probably have to provide it in multiple methods, which is not difficult to do.
Right. Well, and it's back to the strategic goal on improving district communication, so it all aligns.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
I might just, I might just say thanks for the report and it was really helpful to see, it was like, it was really good news, it was really challenging news, but I think Julie, how you wound up, I mean, I couldn't agree more with your summary statement at the end, but I mean, as somebody who's watched a lot of Finnish teachers chatting about education, what's striking is, it's great we're at the top of the international academic scorecard, but really matters is how are our kids, how are, how's our population, how are our people? And I think that's really, that's really it. The, the subject is so big, I don't know how to begin to have a conversation. Can we do better?
Yes, absolutely.
Right? How much better on what timetable, by what means? I'm always stumped with sort of where to go from here. So I'm asking you to solve that right now. No, I'm not. What do we do?
I think the big thing when you look at standardized test data and data is, once again, it's one, it's one indicator. And that's why like on your scorecards, when we talk about the strategic plan, it's not all focused on standardized testing. And we really have to be looking at the reason that the community, et cetera... And we really have to be looking at, the reason that the community, et cetera, our families look at us as a destination district or want to come here is because the opportunity is that we can afford their child. And so, and, and is it, is it a good fit or is it a good match? That's where we need to be focusing. Definitely, do we need to have high standards? You know, tell us what we need to be held accountable. We, we will do that and we will continue to do that, but I, I never want us to lose sight of that, that big picture. So it's, it's at the same time, and, and this is something that keeps me up at night thinking is, how much do we, I, I mean, honestly, like how much do we pay attention to standardized test scores and accountability? But at the same time, how many of us weren't very good test takers? You didn't really do well on a standardized test and after you take the ACT or get in where you want to go or do, whoever asked you for it again? You know, I, I, I mean, I mean seriously. So, or, or like once you, once you get into your career, do they ever ask you about your GPA ever again? You know, that, that kind of thing. So, so it's like, you know, what, what's the proper weight to put on it? Because do we want to be held accountable to high standards? Absolutely. Can our students do it? Absolutely. At the same time though, we want to be looking at opportunities. Are they well-rounded? Are they truly being cut? And we've chosen in Oshkosh use college, career, and community ready. Are they ready to enter our, whether it's our community, the state community, the, you know, international, global community? Are they ready, are they ready to do that? And what does that look like?
Listen, the striking number to be honest, or presentation perhaps, was the 50% who aren't enrolled in the state. So that says to me maybe, I mean, it's dangerous to project here, but maybe there are pathways other than traditional formal education to reach those people, right? Such a tough path, for example, of our effort be to those things which lie outside traditional pathways, which sounds rather shocking maybe, but it brings those questions forward.
Yes, excellent. More, more questions than answers, right?
That was a big one for me also, was that other 50%, like how do we find out what they are doing, where they are, why they, why that number decreased? Why some, you know, I would assume that some of the, the four-year went down and then some of those students, you know, I know a few of them who then jumped on the two-year, you know, and switch back and forth. That makes complete sense. But 50% of our community is not going on and we don't know where they are, what they've done, that's a huge number.
Right. We, we can make some assumptions. We, we need to know that in, in our area, right here in the Fox Valley area, we're at a 2.3% unemployment rate. And so, so right now with, with, if, if you are looking for employment, you, you essentially have, I mean, people are looking for, yes. And, and I mean, there is just, there's, there is absolutely jobs out there. So I mean, that, that may have some play with it too because we do really have a good economic base going on right now in the area, so.
And as we know, enrollments across university system in the state are now...
Yes, it is very true. Yep.
So if you can figure it out, tell them they'd like to know too.
Right.
One of the questions that this report brings to mind for me is equity. I was recently at a DPI, not a DPI, WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards meeting and we talked in one of those sessions about the differences between equity and equality. And historically, there have been a lot of data that have been shared relative to students from the free and reduced lunch group as well as the second language learners where vocabulary development is a, is a big deterrent to their success in school. So that brings question, this is rhetorical. What do we need to do in terms of allocation of resources to make sure that, that those children are getting what they need? It may be different in a Jefferson school or a, that has a high, a free and reduced lunch rate, has a high number of, of second language learners historically versus maybe a Carl Trager school where those populations may not be as large. So do we need to look at, at some point down the line, allocating resources so that we're meeting the needs of those children? You use the health analogy. I think of a family maybe who has two children, one needs glasses, okay? So you buy glasses for the one child. Yes, you're spending more money on that child, but that's because there's a need there that they have. So is that unfair to the child who doesn't need the glasses? I would say no. Because we're, we're trying to meet the children where they are and move them forward. And so I think that's something for us to talk about down the line in terms of, of equity versus equality. And then when we get into the question of, and we've had this question brought up by representatives of parent groups who say, well, our principal is asking us to spend thousands of dollars of, of PTO money on guided reading materials. Other schools can't afford that. And so where is the equity for those children? Because it becomes a matter of, Stan likes to say the ZIP code. There's maybe not a big variance in the ZIP code, but the neighborhood where the children live.
Of course, the state does have ZIP code, it sure is.
Yes, but in the city, it's, it's certain neighborhoods where those school populations don't have the, the wherewithal to generate other sources of money or necessarily apply for grants. So what does that mean if your child goes to one of those schools where they, they can't afford to buy the guided reading materials? And then what's the district's responsibility stepping in? Because we've heard the adage all the time, it takes a village to educate a child. And so how do we, how do we account for those differences? Rhetorical question to be continued. Rhetorical questions, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question and to echo what Steve said, thank you for this presentation tonight and Chris did a great job. Were there, was there anything that was surprising in the numbers that you looked at and you were like, wow? No?
Absolutely not. What I've, what I've been very, I've been very impressed with and we've just had a lot of conversations that are, our internal assessments that we are doing, have been pretty good predictors of how we're going to, how we're going to do on state assessments. I mean, it's not exactly one, it's not exactly one-to-one, but we, the indicators that we've seen definitely predict from there. So based on our internal indicators, that's why I'm predicting another uptick coming in our, in our standardized assessment score. So no, I'm, there was nothing shocking in that. When you, when we see our state and school report cards, there was nothing that was, that was shocking there either. Everything kind of turned out as predicted. Yeah.
I think we have to remember that Julie's summary statistics of the overlapping issues of poverty and disability in, in English language learners, we have, of our 10,000 students, 20% of our students are either in special ed or English language learners. And 42, 44% of our children are in poverty. And that combination, if you dissected that and you dealt with some of the comparison districts, you would not find those numbers that equalize that. And that is a compounding effect. It is, it makes our addressing the issues even a greater, greater problem to identify and to deal with. And one of the other issues that will be interesting to watch in the future is our higher mobility level. Several of our elementary schools this year are experiencing upwards of one-third of their children are, are new to their school. And some portion were internal movement, but a good portion are, are families relocating out of more difficult urban areas and coming into our school district seeking a new start. And that's a compliment to us, but also is a, is a compounding effect on how do we reach those students as their family needs haven't changed since they relocated from other areas in the state or from Illinois.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, request for future agenda items. Any announcements? Quiet group tonight.
We should note the fact that in addition to the notice we had from one of our schools about Veterans Day programming, we have a very broad selection of Veterans Day opportunities, both on, on Friday, the 10th, as well as Saturday, the 11th. And high schools, middle schools, do check, we'll, we'll make a point of having those listed on our website because of honoring our veterans and, and is, has been taken on as a very positive direction in the community and one, in fact, we have some overlapping Veterans Day programs and time commitments. But do check on schedules that both Friday, the 10th, and Saturday, the 11th, we have some outstanding Veterans Day programs that are being placed, put on by our schools and the bands, choirs, and, and the leaders in our schools are investing tremendous amount of time to honor our veterans.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, I'll need a motion to adjourn. Please call the roll.
I, I, Aliza.
I.
Evan.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I.
Evan, hi.
I.
Turner, I.
Do you want to stay?
I.
Did I have questions?
I.
Special I, mostly carries.
Gosh, I thought we weren't going to be able to turn there for a minute. She was going to hold this up. Oh, I get to do this now.
We have to try again.